Hey, Paul, can you hear us again?
I can hear you fine, yes.
Thank you. You doing all right?
I am. How are you guys? Wonderful. Thank you, everyone, for accommodating me.
I'm proud of you so much. Feel quick.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Something great to say.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge. I remain standing for a moment of silence.
The United States of America, and to the Republic from which we stand, we are nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Have a moment of silence for our first responders and military who have given their all in the performance of their duties. First off, for this public comment.
I guess that would be me.
Hit the button there, Teri, on your microphone. Turn that so we can...
My name is Teri Murphy, for those of you who don't know me. I am currently Chair of New York, of New Freedom Borough Planning Commission. I have had 30 years' planning experience, so I'm not a novice at this. I understand you discussed the regional comp plan at the last Borough Council meeting, and I've watched the videotape, and there was some misinformation given out at that meeting that I wanted to set the record straight. First of all, the current municipal, uh, comprehensive plan that we're working under was adopted in the year 2000. It was the first southern regional comprehensive plan. That plan was updated in 2010. However, New Freedom Borough did not participate in that updating of the comprehensive plan. So we're still operating under the comprehensive plan from 2000. In 1999, the zoning ordinance was revised, and that zoning ordinance is still current. There's been a few minor updates to, I'm sorry, there was one major update to that, and minor updates over the years. The major update was including the urban mixed-use overlay zone in the central business district, which is where the townhouses and vortex currently are located. The original plan for that property called for twice as than 300 apartment units. That development was sold to Berquentin, and Berquentin came in with 150 townhouses and required this. It was less than what was originally planned for that site. There have been no changes to the zoning districts since that time, which means we're currently operating under that ordinance. The entire borough is zoned for development, whether you like it or not, that's what it is. Back in 1992, Borough Council decided that that's how it should be zoned. It should be for development. And they came up with different zoning classifications at that time. The comment was made about the, about New Freedom being an established growth area. We are an established growth area. That was designated in 2000 and adopted by the York County Planning Commissions in their comprehensive plan. New Freedom Borough signed onto that plan. It's nothing new. It's what has been in place since then. There's actually one large parcel left in the borough. It's approximately 39 acres. It's in the rural residential zone, which requires it to be a cluster development. There's not gonna be more than 23 houses on that if it ever gets developed. The Ryers who own the property weren't interested in developing it at all. Majority of that property is in Shrewsbury Township, and can also be developed, in Shrewsbury Township, using whatever development rights they have. I don't know what the exact number is off the top of my head. It can be developed. It's zoned for development, whether you like it or not, it's what it is. Every air, every square inch of borough must be zoned something. So, and back in 92, Borough Council decided we didn't need any agricultural zoning because we were a town, basically, and that's where the development should occur. There was public water and public sewer available, which is a component of an established birth area. It doesn't mean it has to, you have to change the zoning. It doesn't mean you have to accommodate more houses than the zoning ordinance allows. Zoning ordinance currently allows multifamily development in the central business district and in the traditional neighborhood development. Can properties be redeveloped? Yes, they can. It's allowed. Comment was made that the Planning Commission just kind of rubber stamps everything. We don't. We look at the regulations in the zoning and subdivision ordinance and make sure that development plans meet those requirements. If they don't, we send them back and tell them, you know, to change their plan and come up with something that meets the ordinance requirements. We are required by law, by the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, to provide zoning and subdivision ordinance, and to follow them. And we do. We don't rubber stamp anything, however much people might wanna believe that. We don't. I have been on the Planning Commission for 33 years. I've seen a lot of development in this borough. How many of you live in a house that was built before 1980? A couple. I don't. I know most of you don't. Do you think people wanted those housing developments to come in? No, they didn't. But according to law, they were allowed. That's what the comprehensive plan does. It sets a guide for the next 10 years on what the borough can accomplish, or what they should accomplish. It doesn't say you have to change your ordinance. It says, "This is what your plan for the future is, and you look at your ordinances to see if you can accomplish that." We can, with our current ordinances. We don't need to revise them at this point in time. There's no reason to. We can accommodate whatever housing we need in this borough. I'm not talking about areas outside the borough. We can't control that. Whatever Shrewsbury Township decides to do with their zoning, or their future land use, or current land use, or primary land use, whatever, it's not up to us to dictate that to them. The same with Shrewsbury Borough, Glenrock Borough, Railroad Borough. It's not up to us to tell them what to do. It's not up to them to tell us what to do. But our, our ordinances allow this type of development. I don't, I, I, I understand the concern over the number of projected housing units. It's projected. It's not written in stone. It's not, this is what it is going to be. It's what it might be in the future. And we have, we have to accommodate what we feel is correct. Whether you adopt the comprehensive plan or not is up to you. I just, I just feel that there was misinformation given out at the last meeting, and I just wanted to second, set the record straight.
So, I think what you're saying, then, is that no matter whether we adopt the plan or not, the zoning is the zoning, sorry.
Whether we adopt the plan or not, the zoning has already been established, and that's what's gonna take precedent over
Yes.
...the comprehensive plan, or even what we want.
That's, that's correct.
What's the, what's the advantage of adopting the comprehensive plan?
It's just a guide for the future. It, it's, the MDC requires that you have a comprehensive plan. It requires that you look at it every 10 years and update it if necessary. It's been 25 years since we updated our comprehensive plan. Is it necessary? Do we need to, do we need to provide anything else in the borough? I don't know. I don't have a copy of the current comprehensive plan, so I don't know whether we need that or not, or whether that's what the borough should look like in the next 10 years. If you had questions, maybe you should've come to the Planning Commission meeting and asked them, you know, before we went ahead and made a recommendation. We made a recommendation based on what was in the York's ordinance. Not that we'd love it, sorry, my mouth is dry. It's what the, what was in there that nobody commented on during any of the public meetings, except one time Erica mentioned that she didn't want the area between boroughs developed, not our property. That's the only comment that was made about growth in New Freedom. So, you know, it's, it all comes down to...
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Uh, Teri, what, the comprehensive plan, you just said, you know, the parameters of New Freedom Borough are pretty well fixed in terms of zoning and what, what land's available. But outside the borough, if the borough adopts the comprehensive plan, and there's, there's adjacent areas, there are areas adjacent to New Freedom Borough and Township that'll be developed, New Freedom has the only treatment plant.
Right.
Really, in the neighborhood.
There's no sewer capacity available currently. Okay. Thank you.
But my question is, is DDP gonna say, "Well, New Freedom, you got the only treatment plant, here's the comprehensive plan that New Freedom also signed on for, and the adjacent areas outside the borough and the township, they're gonna be developed, they have to use your treatment plant, so you're gonna have to do something with your treatment plant, maybe go out with a tertiary treatment or something like that, 'cause we just had a discussion just before the meeting about something similar." And so, the, the fact that New Freedom adopted the comprehensive plan, is that more or less New Freedom, or more or less DEP looking at, looking at it like, you adopted it, New Freedom, you knew this might come, so now you're gonna, if your treatment plant, you have to do something with your treatment plant to satisfy these needs outside the borough and adjacent parts of the township, then you're gonna have to do it.
That I don't know, but I do know the township's not gonna approve any plans if there's no sewer capacity. They're not. Um, you know, they've already put, there's already plans on hold that have not been approved in the township.
But you know how these things go, Teri, when there's enough pressure, and they talk, they, they call enough legislators, and they say, "We wanna do this, and it's good for the economy," you know, New Freedom's at the, literally, New Freedom's at the end of the pipe. It's right down to here, it's, it's called the treatment plant.
No.
And whatever comes down there, we have to deal with. And...
That is, I can't answer that question, because I don't know the answer to it.
I, I know, I'm just, I'm...
I, I, I understand where you're going with that, and I, as a resident of New Freedom, I appreciate that concern. I don't know.
And I'm bringing it up, because the only thing that, not the only thing, but, but what DEP and EPA have said, since the Chesapeake Bay is involved, that New Freedom, you can discharge so much BOD, suspended solids, nitrogen, phosphorus, it doesn't matter how many more houses you hook up, your total pounds are gonna stay the same. That means the concentrations being discharged has to get smaller and smaller.
Right.
And anybody that knows anything about wastewater treatment is that the smaller you wanna make that concentration, the more difficult or more aggressive your treatment process has to be. We just had that discussion, too.
But I, I understand that, and I understand there's some room for the treatment plant to grow, or not much room for it to grow.
And I guess the only, the only thing I'm getting at is if New Freedom says, "Yeah, we're gonna sell, we're gonna approve the comprehensive plan," are we just saying, "Yeah, we knew at the time when we approved the comprehensive plan that we could be on the hook for doing something to, to the treatment plant to make this comprehensive plan viable, doable, and go into effect?"
Well, the only other option would be the township provide on-lot water and sewer, you know, or public water through York Water, like they've done, and public, and on-lot sewer.
But how, how do, how do you think DDP's gonna react to a development for on-lot sewers, to reach one of the lots, or New Freedom's treatment plant, just do something with your treatment plant? Do they, DDP likes that kind of thing, centralized treatment. They don't like this other stuff.
If I can interject, I don't think DDP has ever said to sewage treatment plant, "You have to expand, and it's gonna cost you money." I mean, if they, if the plant were to be expanded, it would be expanded through dollars raised by either Hopewell or Shrewsbury Township.
Well, the other thing the DDP could do is if New Freedom said, "You know, we're, we're not gonna expand our treatment plant." Okay, so then they'll go to Shrewsbury Township and say, "It was moratorium. You can't build anywhere houses, they're gonna discharge anything from New Freedom's treatment plant." And you got people who own property in a township that said, "Yeah, I bought this lot because I thought it's gonna be residential," or, "I bought this air, this block, this area because it was gonna be developed for residential, and now I can't." And, you know, it's, it's the squeaky wheel thing, and, and there's a lot of pressure that gets put on legislators and elected officials to say, "All right, come on, you gotta do something. You guys signed on to approve the plan, and now chickens are gonna come home to roost because you need more treatment plant capacity, and you gotta do something."
Concerned?
I, I don't believe it's the responsibility of any municipality to guarantee the goodness of the investment you chose to make on your own.
It's not, John, it's not the municipality. You go to Harrisburg, or you can go to, go to the US, the federal partnership, because people there will be putting pressure on local people to say, "Do you wanna do this?"
The only point I'm making is, they bought the land with expectation of it. "I bought Oracle stock two weeks ago. It was not a good decision. I paid a penalty for that. Woe on me.
It sounds good.
I bought my house with an expectation of growth. If it doesn't happen, woe on me. It is not your, any municipality or form of government's responsibility to have any consideration at all on the appropriateness or effectiveness of my investments." Small point.
It's a good, it's a good point, and I think the only thing that Danny's trying to say is that these lots are being sold, they're in an area that is zoned where they should be allowed to build a house, but they can't. So if I'm buying, I'm doing my due diligence, and I say, "Oh, this lot is zoned rural residential, so I can build my house," and then it turns out that, "Well, no, there's no sewage treatment capacity, so I cannot build my house." But I still don't see how we, as a borough, or as a sewage treatment plant owner, would be required at our own cost to update the plant. I think it would be, we would have to be willing, if it were possible, as long as somebody else provided the funds.
That was Paul.
Usually, when a developer presents a, a plan, one of the things to have to demonstrate is that there is sufficient capacity already existing at the wastewater treatment plant to handle whatever the additional load would be. So, you do have that factor. The other thing that I wanted to comment on for you is, there was a statement that there's already a zoning ordinance in place, and that is true. Generally speaking, though, the process is that the comprehensive plan is then used as a basis to revise and update the zoning ordinance. So, you may make changes to the current zoning ordinance that affect development rights and use of property and so forth within the, within the borough, based on a comprehensive plan that would point in that direction, that would say that we, we should make these changes to the zoning ordinance. So, just because you have one now that has certain development rights, doesn't mean that that is necessarily the one you will have after you adopt the, the comprehensive plan and implement its provisions. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that flexibility.
And, in actuality, what, what Solicitor Telly just said is the thing that kind of sent chills up my spine, because what he's saying is, the comprehensive plan could actually push the zoning in a different direction, so we could end up, you're shaking your head, but...
And I don't think they will.
I mean, there could be more different people sitting on this council in 10 years, and...
Could be. I don't think that's, I agree with his statement. It could happen, theoretically, but for New Freedom Borough, there just isn't any land available for more development. We already allow all types of housing in the borough, including my homes. And as a professional planner, I don't see any need to change the zoning based on the proposed comprehensive plan. There's no advantage to the borough to do that. I think you mentioned middle housing. That's a new term that's come out. It just basically means multifamily housing, that is somewhere between single-family housing and low-rent apartments, or whatever. It's, it's housing for young people who can't afford to buy a house, or it's housing for, it's shared housing, basically. It's nothing new. We already allow for that in our zoning ordinance.
Mary Ann, you had?
Well, I just don't know why anyone would approve this, you or you, that we don't have the sewer and water and treatment in place.
I'm, I'm sorry, is that...
I said, "I don't understand why zoning would approve it, or any of you would approve this, if we don't have the sewer to monitor, that can sustain it, number one."
Well, you, you won it, but, I mean, I'll, I'll give you an example that came to my mind that, that I, that would be a concern. We are zoned commercial development on Second Street. If I were a developer, I could come in and buy several of the properties there. It's zoned for four-story. I could put, it's zoned for apartments. I could put in a four-story apartment building on the block that I just purchased, and then you would have additional housing, you would have, I think, what Erica has been concerned about, you would have a growth with, and each house has close to two cars, 1.8, I believe, and now you have the infrastructure, you don't have the infrastructure to support that. I think that was the concern whenever we voted the, the comprehensive plan down.
Right. I don't think you should vote it down again tonight.
I'm sorry?
I said, "I think you should vote it down again tonight." But, am I understanding correctly, did she say that there's 23? Is that all that's left that can be built in New Freedom, or did I misunderstand you?
There is one vacant parcel left in the borough, one large vacant per parcel.
And these 39 acres and 23.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think so.
And that's it.
Wait, where are these 39 acres? Because I'm not aware of 39 acres, other than...
I just, I, it's a general, I did a, a measurement on the county tax assessment website based on the property that's located in the borough, for the Ryer Farm.
Are you, are you counting the bur, the new development that's going out in, on North Constitution as, I'd like to know where 39 acres are. The Ryer Farm is basically the only one.
Yes, that's the way we're talking.
And that, you said, the bulk of it, that is in Shrewsbury Township.
The whole parcel is 105 acres, approximately.
New Free, but the, the portion that's in New Freedom Borough is only, what, four acres?
No.
Five acres?
It's more than that.
I'd like to know where it is.
It's, it goes up to semi-burned campground, and down along the borough line.
But that's in Shrewsbury Township.
No, it's not. It's in New Freedom Borough.
There can't be 39 acres in the borough for that. I'd like to, I'd have to see that.
Last month, this council had another long discussion and unanimously voted no. I don't understand how it has, a resolution's been put in this packet, and it's on the agenda again. When the council was clear in the last meeting, who, who asked to have this put back on? Outside, we, we're a council as one, we're not individual, we conducted business as a, as a whole. Who outside of the council had this put back on?
Was it turned down, or was it just taped?
It was voted no, unanimously. All seven council members voted no. Who outside of a meeting had discussion to put this back on?
It was me. Or nobody.
Yeah, is there a way to divide it all, quite broadly?
Well, who contacted you to come here, anyway? Or did you just watch the video and wanted to be here?
The reason I'm here is just to clear up some of the misinformation that was given out at the last meeting.
The only information I gave out at the last meeting was taken exactly from the plan.
No, it wasn't.
And the, you, you brought up one of my points about capacity, and right now, through the contract, New Freedom is used, is supposed to use no more than 35%, and often is using more than their percentage that they're allowed monthly. That's a problem. And I would like to know, if you wanna raise your hand up here, who feels they were voted in to make decisions like this, and voting, voting for a plan like this? Anybody up here? Because I, I don't, I don't, the people overwhelmingly, the word that I've heard over the last week is the word ruined. When we talk about developing, and what New Freedom, over the last decade, two decades, has turned into, the word that comes up often is ruined, because of all the building. And a lot are saying, "This isn't the town that I moved to. This isn't the town. I feel horrible for the people that were born and raised here. My gosh, what they have seen."
Well, I mean, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I'll go back to what Teri brought up at the very beginning. I mean, my house is on a farm, your house is on a farm, Ryan's house is on a farm. The only person that probably can get away with not saying that would be Danny and, you know, a couple other people here that have original houses, but even those houses were on virgin land at one, at one time, so...
They were. I have, I have pictures of the town, New Freedom, back in the 1800s, when none of this was...
Yeah, so, I mean, you, you could say ruined, if, if you want to, and it, and it, I guess it makes...
Not my words, it's their words, that they're using.
Doesn't matter. I mean, it really doesn't. I mean, whoever's words they are, I mean, I, I can say that, too. I mean, we're, we're taking away a lot of land, the deer are walking through my backyard because they don't have anywhere else to go. But back in 1992, as Teri said, they decided that we were going to develop New Freedom as a bedroom community, basically, for, for the, the people coming here, so...
For the current council. Doesn't matter what they did back in 92. We're, we're the current council. We have an aging population. There are going to be plenty of existing homes.
Well, I don't disagree with you. That's why I joined you in voting down the comprehensive plan, and I, I don't disagree, and I, and I wholeheartedly believe that when it becomes lucrative enough, someone will buy a block in New Freedom, and they will rebuild it, repurpose it into something which is, passes the zoning, that we're not gonna like, but it's still, it is possible for that to happen.
Absolutely.
But it could be something that we do like. It could be. Where there are houses that we would prefer that they weren't there, falling down, and...
Another, another point that was brought up at the, at the last meeting was the Summers Canary property. That's all zoned industrial. Housing is not permitted in the industrial zone. And, and you have to provide, according to law, you have to provide areas for industrial, commercial, and residential uses. Can it be rezoned? Yeah, it can.
Absolutely.
So can any other, any other property?
Absolutely.
However, where are you gonna put your industrial uses if it's rezoned? You still need to have land where you can put industrial uses.
We were sold a bill of goods with Veterans Drive, can't be subdivided. There's no utilities there, nothing can go on.
It's two lots in there.
That's just an example.
And they were told they couldn't develop, they couldn't build a house unless they had public utilities.
They do, and they do now.
Well, it's two lots.
And they said, they said it couldn't be subdivided, and all of a sudden it is. Money talks.
I don't know who said it couldn't be subdivided, because that's not true.
This council, this, this council, I was at the meeting... This council, I was at the meetings, said it couldn't, okay?
Well, then why did you approve the subdivision plan? Council had to approve it.
It wasn't this council.
Well, then it wasn't this council.
It wasn't this council.
And the farm behind over there on Singer, I asked before, that was not long ago rezoned, correct?
What land?
To the rural residential.
Off of Singer? Where the trails of New Freedom are?
Over by Summit Grove?
No.
Above Orly?
That's always been rural residential.
On the New Freedom side?
On the New Freedom side or the township side?
Either side.
Nothing over there's been rezoned.
Right. The only change to the zoning was a central business overlay.
That was the one here, right?
Yes, I guess.
Which, for the record, I was opposed to because it constitutes spot zoning, because it only applies to one parcel in the borough.
And New Freedom has a thousand more percentage in population density than the township.
That's what you keep saying. We're two square miles.
Yes. Johnny?
Terry, obviously you are in favor of the comprehensive plan.
I am, because our comprehensive plan needs to be updated.
So, what is the downside of them voting no?
The comprehensive plan that is currently in effect from 2000 will remain in effect.
And what is wrong with that?
It's outdated. Nobody has looked at that plan to see if it meets the... If it meets the needs in the borough currently and for the next 10 years. If that's the case, if you choose to vote this one down, then you need to take a serious look at the current comprehensive plan from 2000 and see if it still meets the needs of the borough and will continue to meet the needs of the borough for the next 10 years. I don't have a copy of that plan, so I can't answer whether it does or not. But you're required by law to do that.
I'm sorry, I'm confused over there. This comprehensive plan, this is not the New Freedom plan. This is a regional plan.
It's a regional plan.
We have to have a participation in regional plan?
No, you do not. However...
So, if we're not happy with the New Freedom plan, we can take care of that.
You can write your own. I mean, have your own written. It's going to cost a lot more money, but it can be done.
Control costs.
Well, that's another question. An engineer wrote a 200-plus-page plan.
I have the current comprehensive plan, regional plan for the, not then included New Freedom. I have it in a car. It's still 200 pages. It's what it is.
Well, I know, but why would they invest so much time? Are they going to be the engineer for all this building of these hundreds of homes that are supposed to come?
No.
Is the developer... Is there a developer that's pushing for this? Because this council was very clear, but now you're here, and it's on the agenda again.
This study was done over a year ago.
Yes. It's... The engineer who did... She's not an engineer. She's a planner who wrote the comprehensive plan, who did the background studies. That's why it's 200 pages. There's a lot of background studies in there for five municipalities. So... But no, she would not be the one involved in anything else beyond this point.
It says here in the plan that New Freedom Borough will need additional 37 to 39 new residential units each decade to 2050, creating a housing need of 114. That said, 144 single-family attached and multifamily units were constructed in '22, '23. New Freedom Borough's projected housing need becomes a surplus of 30 units, considering the newly built units. We do even need this, and they weren't even accounted for. And then there is the other 37 homes that are going in over on Kirchner, and I haven't been able to figure out where they're at yet, but another 23 rental units are anticipated as part of a mixed-use rental residential development. So, that's 204 dwellings right there that aren't even a part of this. But then you're telling us that we need another 300 and... How does it sit here? 81. Over 500 homes.
That's what I don't understand. How can they say we need that? That many homes when we don't even have that much space?
We have a surplus right now.
It's based on population projections. I don't know where she got her figures.
That's my problem. It seems like it's a lot of flawed math with some of the calculations on there.
Yeah.
I agree with the plan. I like that they had it 20 years ago. I wish that it would have looked a little bit different, focusing more on the rural aspects to keep this community rural. Obviously, none of us, or not many of us, were here 20 years ago. Can't do anything about...
I've seen a lot of change.
We didn't have a say in it then, but...
Sorry?
I had this long discussion.
Well, I think this is just... This actually is really just public comment. Sarah, you had a question?
No, it's okay. I was endorsing, let's go ahead and vote. If it was already voted for, you might not even need to vote.
I don't think we need to vote. It's on the agenda.
Why didn't you come here requesting?
I know. And I think... Sorry, Mike. I think that your point is well-taken. I think we probably do need to look at what is suitable for New Freedom, and it might be good to put some words around that and have, if not, a comprehensive plan that applies to our neighbors, at least one that applies to us, that has the thoughts of the citizens in it. So, I think that would be a good idea. I like that idea.
You say the last comprehensive plan was, what, 2020? Or when was it? 20...
The one that New Freedom is currently under, 2000?
Do we have that in the office, Andrew?
We do.
I mean, we... How many people here have looked at it on this council? None of us, I'm sure. None of us. Right?
Yeah, so I'm on board with Erica 100% on this. She and I are from California, and we've seen what older population does. So, I totally get what she's doing. With the... The way things are now, can somebody create... What's the height limit of dwellings people can create? Can they create an apartment complex with six stories to it?
No. It maxes 44 feet in the commercial area or four stories.
And Carrie, there's no, like...
No skyscrapers, no.
That's presented...
And I don't know where the mixed-use multifamily is proposed. I've never heard of that.
It's in the...
I don't know where that is. It's not in New Freedom Borough. I guarantee it's not in New Freedom Borough. The houses on Kirchner are. Some of them are.
No, it is. It's that... That... Those apartments are mentioned more than one time in New Freedom in this plan.
What apartments? Where are they? I don't...
I'm not the developer that did this or the engineer that did this. I'm reading the 200 pages. I put my time into it. It's in the plan.
I don't think they currently exist nor are they located. I think they're just saying that they need that. That's a need identified in the comprehensive plan. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Any additional public comment?
Sorry it took so long. Good evening, everybody. Oh, I turned it off. Sorry, good. Good evening, everybody. I'm Myra Gillis. I'm sure most of you know me by now, been around doing this thing. And this, actually, I'm here to talk about the parade, of course. And this is our fifth year. It's hard to believe it's been that long, that many years, but here we go. And of course, everything is moving right along. Calls are coming in every day for participants, registrants, that kind of thing. And I don't know how many of you have saw or follow our Facebook page. YCEA nominated me as the jury maker down here in Southern York County, and I was just ecstatic about that, to even be nominated. But they say it's because of all the stuff that's happening down here, and they feel that I bring a lot of joy, well, my husband and I bring a lot of joy to New Freedom. So, we want to thank everybody for that. The actual reception for that will be December 11th at York College, with UPMC being my presenter, along with Comcast. So, that's exciting for me. But back to the parade. Everything is on point. We're down to less than 30 days now, but it's all coming together. We always need volunteers, especially for the reception afterwards, because last year we served quite a few people. I think it was over 400. And with the sponsorships that we get from local businesses, or even businesses that are not even in New Freedom, have heard of and are willing to sponsor, along with the local restaurants like Seven and Chick-fil-A, Starbucks, and those kind of people, they help us. So, anything that we can do to bring joy to New Freedom, we're all about that. And the fact that this week also is National Kindness Week. We thought it tied into this kind of perfectly. There was also, yesterday, I think it started raining or something, and my husband pulled over, and the lady was out with a dog, and they were getting drenched, and he had an umbrella, and didn't know the lady, but he gave her his umbrella. And so, Facebook just kind of took that and just ran with it, you know? Because kindness helps. If you can't be anything else, be kind. So, the lady took it upon herself to come back to our house, return the umbrella with a gift card. I mean, kind... It's just kindness all around. So, with the kindness and the joy that this parade brings, we're just excited and happy about it. So, I mean, in saying that, if anybody had any other suggestions or comments, no, it's our door for our work. Everybody want to ask that question? We always try to do something that's really, really, really nice for the town, because we love New Freedom. And I guess that's no question about that.
Appreciate that.
So, anybody have any questions for me or anything? Now's the time.
Hey, Myra, when's the last time the limit of being able to get in the parade having a float?
Oh, yeah, the cutoff point for the parade. Right now, our number is upwards of 70.
Wow.
So... But at some point, we're going to cut it off because it gets... I mean, it's nice, you know, to see all the floats and everything, but at some point, we're going to cut it off. So, right now, we've decided to extend it to the week before. But if we get numbers coming in like this week and all that pushes us further to the number, we may stop at that point. Because we're stretching from Singer all the way down through and around to get these people in, because we've seen it, and we have all kinds of stuff with tractor trailers and, you know, the marching bands, and you name it, it's there. And we hope that everybody appreciates seeing it, and especially the little kids with all the candy. We did have a couple... Well, I shouldn't say a couple, maybe one or two. Questioned the fact that in this parade, no one is allowed to dress as Santa. No one. So, we got some pushback, saying, "Well, we were going to be Santa and as elves and this kind of thing." Wrong parade. We will not take the joy from our little people. That's very, very important to us. So, if you want to be in a parade, come along. You can. But you cannot be Santa. We only have one, and he comes down the road at the end. People say that they run out of candy. Participants think, "Man, I ran out before..." And then they get to the center of town, it's like, "Oh, my gosh, all these people. I didn't get enough candy today because I'm going to buy more next year. I'm going to be prepared." It's just people everywhere. Everywhere. Thank you, Myra. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Myra? What do you do to police your own people that are volunteers within your organization that are helping you? Because I noticed we had some problems last year. The ones that I saw were specifically at the community center, and several people that were serving as volunteers smoking marijuana in the parking lot. Do you have people that are there to police your own people?
We have volunteers, but we don't have physical police officers. We can only do so much. I don't... These are paid... These are non-paid volunteers.
I would hope that you meet with those volunteers and set a strict set of rules and standards for them before the parade this year, because I had several people complain about the use of drugs in the parking lot and in the community center.
Okay, well, we have meetings with our volunteers, and they know the rules, and they know what to do when it comes to... They cannot police people. They're not told to be confrontational, because that's not their job. So, if a person is going to do something, they're going to do it.
I don't think he meant actually policing. I think what he meant was make sure that people understand the rules, and if you see someone violating the rule, you should mention it to them. It's not... He's not slapping cuffs on any...
Not police-police, but overlook.
And they do.
Your people, because it really was a problem. Yeah, a lot of older people can't get out. They sit in their cars, they watch the parade, and next thing you know, there's one of your volunteers out in the parking lot smoking marijuana, and it's wafting into their car.
One of our volunteers?
Yes.
I'd like to know who it was.
I'd like to know who it was, too, because as soon as we...
Then I suggest if nobody knows who it was, that we should probably terminate the discussion on the basis of...
I would just want you to have...
Unless you have pictures or sworn statement, I think we should move on.
Okay. Any other questions?
No. Thank you, Myra.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Myra. We loved the parade. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Moving on then, approval of minutes from the regular meeting held October 20th. We'll do them separately.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular session from October 20th, 2025.
Do I have a second? I'll take that a second. Sir, are there any questions or corrections?
Just that under public comment, the first five words, while not on the agenda. Water system is on the agenda. Should not be there because water system is on the agenda.
I have no problem taking out the rules.
I'm in my motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? I vote as I'm... I'm sorry.
I'm not sure that you realize that Rose is here. Is it for that?
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll postpone the second set of minutes until after... Have to forgive me. I'm not seeing very well today. Even worse than usual.
So, I have the monthly fire report. Alex here, the EMS chairman, has got the EMS report here for us. And then this is President Rich Palmer with the Fire Department, so if anybody has any questions about anything moving forward, we can hopefully assist that for you. So, for the month of October, we had a total of 58 calls. Out of those 58, 38 of those calls were fire dispatches. 18 of those were EMS calls to fire police, and we had no duty officer calls. I do not have the average turnout times this meeting. We are currently in a... We are currently in the process of switching over to a new recording software. So we're still trying to figure out how to pull those numbers and everything from that. I'm happy to announce that we have two new members that applied last month. One for social, one for EMS. He is an EMT and we are set to bring him. He definitely uses the EMTs on the fireside to help us with the mid-locals when the ambulance is currently busy. Some of you already know this, and for those that don't know this, we had kicked off a capital campaign for the Tower 58 ladder truck in replacement of that. Letters were sent out to a lot of our local businesses and a lot of the pass-through companies like the beverage companies, snack trucks, you know, and then car dealerships, et cetera. I think there was like 178 different organizations that we sent letters out to. I think the last time I remember that was tallied up was right around 8,000 donated so far toward that. A lot more letters are going to get out again here now that New Year's arriving. We're going to try and get back out there, maybe get in their budget lines for next year and do a little bit better this year. With that being said, we also have a local fund drive that we're looking to hopefully kick off at the beginning of next year, going door to door with some letters that we drafted up, you know, letting people know that we're trying to raise money for this ladder truck and, you know, everyone that possibly helps. And as you guys know, it was just shy of $2 million for this ladder truck. Again, we really appreciate your guys' assistance with that. So that's what I have for the fire report. Alex, have your EMS report here.
All right, so this last month of October, we handled 155 incidents. To date, that brings us to about 1,676. We'll be on track for about 2,000 for the year, which is roughly what we had last year. It hasn't been brought up at one of Bernie's before. The chase truck, I think it really has made a big difference. It's been serviced since August of last year. So to date, if we compare to last year, we are about, it was the whole year, okay, so we are about nearly 130 less calls that we're missing or having a big unit out of service for. And if you compare that to 23, since we went in service kind of part of the last previous year, if you compare that to 23, it is, it is closer to almost half. So I believe it's made a big difference.
Absolutely. And then, again, I forgot to mention that the Fire Department has run a total of 502 fire calls straight forward this year. We're following kind of a single where we were last year. I think we had 579 calls in total last year. So not that, we've seen an incline or an increase of calls, but slowly each year, it does seem to be rising and what have you. So this year seems to be kind of leveling out. So we're glad that it's leveling out. We'd like to kind of set that number down a little bit, especially on the medical side. It's increasing on that side dramatically. Any questions from you guys?
What about the new radios? Are you hearing new? Any information about that?
So no, the only thing that we heard was about a year ago. They said that, so prior to a year ago, they said that the radios that we currently have are coming to the end of life, as they put it. The new word on the street is that the radios that we currently have are still going to be active for approximately another year or two. With that said, there's still an abundance of parts for replacement and repairs that can be done to these radios. So even though that the end of life of manufacture of the current radios that we have are going to stop, we'll still be able to access parts and whatnot if these ones do currently break. So I believe that we're probably going to be okay for the next, I'd say probably four years, four or five years. And then that'll be another expense that we're going to be looking at. And we did, two years ago when this first came up, we did price radios out for Harris radios. It was like right around 270,000. We also looked at the more durable side of things with the motorola radios and those came in around $400,000. So, yeah, pretty pricey. And then we have SCBA's that are also in the close to near future that are looking to get replaced here. But we're looking at options to hopefully just replace the cylinders themselves and not the packs. The packs themselves are still in fairly good shape. They're worn, but they're not, you know, torn enough to where you feel like they're not usable or safe to use anymore. So it really comes down to just the cylinder itself that is running out of life. But other than that, no, so that's all I heard about the radios.
Put that in per radio term, but I don't know how many radios you have total.
So in total, we have, I believe, 35 radios.
Radio per member?
So it's a radio, it's six radios per unit because that's how many can ride on a unit. And then each officer has a radio. And then the EMS side has two portables per member that ride the ambulance. And then that's also including the minimal radios that are inside of each unit. So technically, it would be seven radios per unit. And then the officers each have a.
And what's the cost per unit that you were most recently quoted?
So the cost, I believe, for a Harris was right around 8,000.
So double that for the motorola.
Yeah, so it was pretty close to almost double for a motorola. Now, I will say that us having both types of radio, the motorolas do hold up a lot better than the Harrises. They seem to have a lot of connection issue between the mic and the radio itself. And the knobs itself are just, they just, they don't, yeah, they're not durable at all. Now, for your riding around in your vehicle kind of thing, it's fine. But going into a fire, car crashes, they get banged up, twisted up, you know, cords break, you know, and they're just, they're not holding up. So we were looking into getting grants to assist us with trying to get these radios as well. Yeah, so we still are, because we're still looking to replace them. Because we like the upgrade from the Harris to the motorola. We have reached out to several different companies that are assisting with grants. One was the Green Fire, I believe, and they've been constantly reaching out to us, letting us know that they can find. Yeah, Motorola Solutions. So, yeah, as of right now, there's not much available. So we're kind of hoping that the New Year brings in.
At least, at least you have four years or hopefully.
Yeah, and that's what we're kind of hoping on. We just hit the three radios that we currently have last. I mean, they're just, right now, the biggest issue is the communication between the mic and the actual portable itself. Some pins on the receiver and all that, or the mic itself just fails. And that's also with volume pricing with other departments involved in it as well. Right, so when we.
Like a bulk.
Yeah, so when we originally did that, it was Shrewsbury, Glen Rock and Storystown that all had sat down with those reps and spoke with them. And this is what we got back from numbers as bulk pricing between the three departments. So I think when we did the last batch of radios, we did the same thing. I think it was Glen Rock, New Freedom, Shrewsbury and Storystown. I think the four departments all went in on a big bulk, trying to get as much of a discount as we possibly could, which ended up working out the best for us. But I would really like to see the county pay for it myself.
Would you go a little bigger with the county to see if you could?
So they usually do. So the county will reach out when they do post out about, you know, radios. They do the same thing with their pagers and stuff when they issue out new pagers and whatnot. They will put out, you know, bulk discounts, you know, for, you know, multiple departments or single department or whatever it may be, depending on how many you care for and whatnot. But again, it's kind of tough for some level of departments to make that jump. You know, we're a little more fortunate than some of the other fire departments. But with that being said, it's like we got the $2 million ladder truck, you know, and then now the radios and it's like SCBA cylinders maybe in near future. On top of that, building, so it's, it's not cheap, obviously. And I mean, you guys know that, so.
No, county EMA had been discussing, because I'm a member of the scheme aboard. And we have been discussing with EMA the price of new radios for you guys and all the other departments. And their pricing was much less than what you're, what you're talking about, like half.
So was that just the radio or was that radio, battery, mic included? Because they will.
I thought, I thought it was everything, but I'll check at the next meeting.
Yeah, because that, so that's where a lot of people.
We were looking at like five, around $5,000 per unit.
Okay, yeah, so that might just be for the radio itself, that might not be battery and mic.
I'll check that. They may have something that they're getting, like they're getting under grants.
So when we, when we budgeted it out, it was for the radio, the microphone, or the mic that comes with it, a battery and a charger.
Are there going to be grants that you know of that are available?
Constantly looking for them.
I know, they're, they're always coming out.
Yeah, and it seems like when they do come out and we do catch windows, they're already filled up. It's, we need to get somebody on the inside to handle that when they're coming out.
I, I get them from Kristen Phillips Hill and I send them right to Jeff.
So yeah, she sends them to me as well. So we get them, we just, sometimes when we get them, they're just, we're a little behind the eight ball when we receive them and they're already filled up all the time. So it's unfortunate, you know, one of these times we'll get it. We just got to be patient.
Alex, is Amy still the supervisor?
No, so Abby and McMahon.
Or Abby?
Yep, Abby still are two of them.
Okay, I, I have not gotten a report from her for the last two months and I look forward to that because it breaks down what municipalities, the call volume is, is for. And I, I like to have that because we have an agreement with the other municipalities that your EMS budget is, that they pay is based on the number of calls per municipality. And I'd like to continue to get that, that update. I haven't gotten one the last two months.
Two months, okay. I thought she sent you something.
Time for the fuel question?
I don't think, there's nothing that you can really do about fuel. They don't, they don't go out on a call and check how much fuel they use.
It wasn't.
Go ahead, if you want to ask a question.
We were talking about as a council about the fuel for ambulance. And people were saying, well, how do you calculate? How come the fuel, they, they talk about putting it in the budget so that, you know, if New Freedom used 35% of the ambulance, New Freedom paid 35% of the fuel cost. Like, how is the fuel cost accounted for with people in these municipalities?
So at this point, my understanding, and I could be, I could be ill informed, but my understanding was that we kind of reimburse the burrow for a fuel rebate.
What actually happens is under, under our EMS agreement with the other municipalities, we're given credit for the fuel. You know, if we, for instance, if we are, if our part of the obligation for EMS is $50,000 and the fuel that we give is $20,000 and we only give 30 and we get credit for the 20 in fuel that we, that they're using.
And, you know, the township?
That is all inclusive, all of the municipalities, right?
Because the township is the bulk of your calls.
Right.
Probably what, around 60, 65%?
Probably close.
Yeah, so that's why I like to keep tabs on that on a monthly basis. And I can if I'm not getting those reports.
So municipalities that use the ambulance are covering the gas?
So they should be in some form.
I, where, where is that coming from? Because I don't know of any place that it shows anywhere.
Fuel usage. It doesn't show us. I don't get a breakdown of exactly what is used fuel-wise and where it actually goes. It's just a, from what I understand, it's just an actual dollar figure. You used X amount of dollars worth of fuel. And that's usually, usually at the end of the year, we get a breakdown. Well, we get a dollar figure that we use. One of the things that would be helpful is if we got a breakdown of that monthly or something like that, so we can start to see who had more calls and try to do it that way. But we don't get a breakdown of that.
But we do do it by calls. That's exactly how our municipal obligations are figured. You know, if, if for instance, there's 100 calls and Shrewsbury Township has 50 of them, they pay 50%. If we have 20 of them, we pay 20% and et cetera.
The problem is, fuel isn't within any of your budget EMS, your EMS or your budget at the beginning of the year. So they're not paying for that fuel. It's not part of the budget. Correct?
It's part of the money that they're being reimbursed by New Freedom, by Shrewsbury, by, yeah. Well, we'll talk about it off-line because, I mean, it's, I can show you. I don't, I brought it with me last time.
Yeah, I'd have to see that because I know I go.
You helped write it.
Well, I did, but that did not include fuel in any of their budgets that they submit.
Well, not in their budgets that they submit, but it's included in what we give them back. That's how, that's how we did that. We took our, the fuel was deducted from the amount that New Freedom owes to pay for our percent of the EMS.
Okay, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see a copy of that break.
I think I might have it on my phone.
Okay.
You talked before about a committee that you formed with the fire chiefs and assistants. Tell council about that.
Oh, yes. So Glen Rock, New Freedom and Shrewsbury all had officers that we selected from each department to meet together. So it's my deputy assistant, Shrewsbury's deputy assistant and then Glen Rock's assistant chiefs. So the SOGs that are created between, or should we say, between, each department has their own set of SOGs. And with those SOGs, each department kind of operates a little differently on working incidents. SOGs, every year we're an SOG.
Operator, operators.
Okay, so each, each department has their, and with inside each department, we all operate a little differently on scenes and whatnot. We're not exactly the same. So we decided the three fire chiefs between Glen Rock, Shrewsbury and New Freedom decided collectively that we should sit down together and maybe come up with a more standardized SOG for all three departments so that we all operate the same way on any kind of working incident. Whether it be a crash, a fire, you know, public service or whatever it may be. We did that, you know, in regards to that, you know, obviously, there's been the chatter about merging that's been going on with the study that's happening and whatnot. And we understand that, you know, it may not happen this year, next year, or what happened, but it could eventually happen within the next, you know, five to 10 years. So this is our way of trying to sort of prepare for that now and getting everybody to operate as in three departments the same on, you know, all working incidents. So this is kind of like the first step, you know, of trying to work toward that. And then obviously, there are probably some other things coming down the road here in the future as far as, you know, box assignment changes and, you know, what units are responding to where and so forth. So, yeah, that's what's happening right now between the three departments as far as trying to.
I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, so like I said, we, we know it may not happen this year or next year, but we know that there may be a time in the future where, you know, a merger may need to happen or paid staffing may need to happen. So this is our way of trying to work toward that.
Where even if it never happens, you're at least be all operating under the same.
And that's also the benefit of it too, is that even, you know, 10 years from now, if maybe everybody's still going healthy and we don't need to merge, but we all know how we operate. So it makes it seem a little smoother for us.
When you talk about merging, do you envision that New Freedom's being locally in this area to us? Or is that that one going all the way down to Springfield Township?
So as I envision a merger happening, I envision it as in the three departments stay where they're at. And that each department is just renamed and numbered. So it would be like, a number would be picked, you know, let's just go with 70. Okay, so instead of Station 58 on top of the hill, we'd be Station 71, you know? Then you'd have Station 70-2, Station 70-3, you know? And we would all still be there because it doesn't make sense to take the three departments and put them in one station and try to centralize them. It's too far of an area to try to cover. I mean, we, we already have a hall for us going from, you know, up here on top of the hill, Tiquetores Township, out there by Middletown Road, that it takes us roughly 12 minutes to get out there. So that's a height for us. So it would not make sense, in my opinion, to put us all in one house in one area. Especially with the huge area that's needing coverage, so.
That makes more sense than what that study said.
Yeah, I, the whole conversation I heard about putting a station in Shrewsbury Township area is just, that would not benefit the, our little town here or Glen Rock.
That would benefit New Freedom.
No, not at all. I think, I think that's the way it should go. If there's going to be any type of merger, it should be the three stations stay where they're at, operate the way they are operating and, you know? But in my opinion, that doesn't change anything other than a name and a number. Because guess what, your staffing's still going to be the same and, so, but anyway.
Would there be a problem that didn't have the fuel thing?
Yeah, just clarify, so you guys are obviously familiar with the fuel system. And I think you made a statement about fuel compared to calls. So the way that system works is we can identify, obviously, the user and we can identify the vehicle that was used. And that breakdown does come out of the borough's allocation. So you've mentioned annually, absolutely. So we do that reconciliation period where we have the EMS tax and the fire tax. And then we total up those gallons and the cost per year and then deduct that out from your gross payment. And then breaking out the EMS though is what has drastically changed because a lot of the fuel is EMS-driven, which is what we've seen there. So if it does help, we can break that out monthly if that's something you guys want to see.
It would be helpful just so we can plan for what's going to receive.
Yeah.
Instead of having it taken out at the end of the year.
At the end, yeah.
So at least we have a little bit better for planning purposes of what we can and can't do. You know, if there's twenty thousand dollars that comes out of X dollar, you know, or not just using.
Yeah, it's not a surprise.
I just don't like it as a surprise so this way we can start to set an order.
That's not a problem.
Easier budgets.
Then it definitely helps for budgeting going into the following year or the next year.
Start our budget planning now for next year, so we don't actually know what we're going to get until.
And I can give you a rough idea, I mean, if we do the similar thing with the proportionate share report regarding our treatment plan. We decided to rough budget out to real rate in Shrewsbury.
That would be, it would definitely help us with making sure that our budget kind of hits a little closer.
Yeah, I mean, obviously the variable is how much you're going to, you know, do you get more calls, less calls? It depends on price per gallon, but that's still competitive.
Sure, but just an average, yeah, no problem.
I'm glad I asked.
Thank you.
I thank all three of you.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'm sorry, did you have anything else?
So I just need to correct part of my EMS report, make sure that be very accurate. So I believe I may have said that the amount of calls, the difference between the amount of calls that we've been out of service for from last year, this year, I believe I may have said a hundred and forty up to this point in the year. We've actually been closer to sixty.
Ah, okay.
Still significantly less, but like to make sure that be very accurate.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Approval of minutes for the budget being held November third, twenty twenty-five? You entertain a motion?
I'm making that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I vote aye. And it was not here, so he was staying. Approval of treasurer's report for October of twenty twenty-five?
Make a motion for the approval of the treasurer's report for October of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Are there any questions?
Just one question, thirty-two hundred dollars in cleaning service?
I'm busy.
Well, that's a question. The bottom one says eight seventy-four cleaning service. That one says BMO and not Swift's cleaning.
Oh, eight seventy-four is security monitoring, that's pretty long, access. Service, see that's, it's, it's actually the line that there's cross, it's the one above. Yeah. Would it, would it help if I start redlining these? Because I agree, sometimes it is difficult to carry that the whole way across. The eight seventy-four is security monitoring.
Oh, but see like a cleaning ser, so then that's even more, cleaning service, twelve, twelve hundred fifty-four and CSO BMO over here.
Yeah. That would have been, so that would have been, it's not necessarily cleaning service, it's more supplies. We can break that out if, if that would help. Not, it's not all cleaning supplies, it's garbage, junk, metal.
I just wanted something really big happened there.
No, no.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote aye. Paul Smith Library for their monthly allocation for November?
Steven with the thousand dollars. Make approval for the monthly thousand dollar allotment to the Paul Smith Library.
I'll second that.
All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I vote aye. We don't need a vote, I mean, we've already voted, so.
I'll make a motion to reject it. Make a motion to reject the Southern York County Regional Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Didn't we already do that last week?
We did, we did, it's on the agenda again, I just don't want there to be any confusion, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I vote aye.
And who put it on the agenda? Nobody answered the question. Who put it on the agenda and nobody answered the question when I asked it earlier?
I think Andrew put it on the agenda, probably because Carrie was going to be here. I, and I missed it, I didn't even see it, so I apologize.
I didn't want, if there was somebody speaking about, to clarify some things. I just wanted the opportunity for council to re-entertain it. And if it wasn't on the agenda, of course, other month and things, so, yeah, I mean, at this point, it's, yeah, I, I was. I tried to help Brian get the.
I do, I do agree that probably after the first of the year, we should think about it committee to have something that is New Freedom-specific. Consider approval of the shelter agreement with the York County Office of Emergency Management.
This is with, everything has been clarified through this was incorrect?
Yes, that's correct, and then there was an additional email that, from the insurance carrier, that they're carrying sufficient coverage in regards to identification and you're basically signing that mutual agreement that you're identifying each other.
Identifying each other.
We're not going to sue each other.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, no, identification means that, it doesn't mean you won't sue. Identification means that if the borough commits an act of negligence, it will defend the county if there is a lawsuit filed because of the negligence of the borough. In other words, if, let's assume that something happens at the emergency center, that is, the borough is fault. But the person who was injured sues both the borough and the county because that person doesn't know who's in charge of whatever it was. What's happening in an indemnity agreement is that the borough would then defend the county in that lawsuit and accept responsibility.
Oh, I learned something new.
And then conversely, the county will do that, it is responsible. So for example, we were talking about, I think, food, right? So let's assume there's food poisoning and the food was prepared and presented by the, by our own behalf to the county or one of its contractors. But the borough gets sued because of the food poisoning as well. The county would have to defend the borough because it's the county that provides the food and the cost.
They're just assuming a lot.
That would be an example of that. So that's what identification is, it's not a agreement not to sue. It's an agreement to provide a defense to somebody who sued for your own division.
Thank you, welcome.
You're welcome.
I stand corrected. Any other discussion? I have a motion?
No.
I would accept a motion to approve the county, you know, agreement with the county for emergency shelter.
I'll make that motion and we approve the agreement with the County of York Office of Emergency Management Shelter Agreement.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I vote aye.
I would assume, Andrew, that you'll fill this out so that I can sign that and you can get that in. Chief of Work is opposite.
Okay. Approval of the twenty twenty-six Animal Care and Housing Agreement with York County SPCA?
Make a motion that we reject the twenty twenty-six Animal Care and Housing Agreement with York County SPCA?
Have a motion to reject?
I'm going to second that, but I'd like there to be some explanation or information why. I mean, it's also only, so I guess I'll second that.
Okay, discussion?
Andrew, you said we suffered, New Freedom Borough utilized the SPCA five times?
According to the, yes.
So that's, yeah, I thought you would clarify even earlier, there was twelve, but that was something else, but it was five. So in addition to that, there's been a lot of information shared about executive pay at the SPCA and it's honestly astounding. With a little bit of, a little bit of homework, you can find their nine ninety online, you can find the pay. Bigger municipalities, Adams County, Borner County, their executive and top individuals make, I'll say significantly less than, than what individuals at the York County SPCA are making and it's kind of disturbing, honestly, so.
His pay went from three hundred and forty-nine thousand in twenty twenty to eight hundred and ten thousand in twenty twenty-four. That's just one of the employees.
Yeah, that was. That's the veterinarian, the veterinarian, yeah.
How much did the vet go up since, do you know that detail?
The total expenses rose from two point seven million in twenty twenty to five point three million in twenty twenty-four.
The total, yeah, but I didn't think the individual pay was eight hundred. There was like, like two fifty-something.
Well, that was it?
Let's see, let me back up here. Housing, housing director, finance director, veterinarian, salaries increased from three hundred and forty-nine thousand in twenty twenty to eight hundred and ten thousand in twenty twenty-four for the same five people. Here we go, the director's salary alone increased from a hundred and nineteen thousand in twenty twenty to a hundred and ninety-nine thousand in twenty twenty-four. So who out there got a twenty-five percent pay increase each year?
Twenty-five percent?
No. Can't.
Any other discussion? Sir?
What's the, what's the impact on New Freedom?
Well, it would be minimal, I mean, there's, there's five, there were five instances last year. I'm sure we can find places, the office will keep a list of places. So if somebody calls in and says, I got a stray dog, what do I do with it? Then the office can tell them, take it here and.
And we do have an animal control officer, correct?
We do, but that animal control officer has to have somewhere to take that animal if there's an issue.
Didn't we talk about their?
Right, that's what, that's.
Several other.
That's what was just mentioned, that we will prepare something that we have on our website, that we put in the newsletter, that we have available for our staff, that gives options to residents.
Great.
And when they call in, that they need to know where to take a stray animal.
And if they still want to go there, they can still go there.
Yeah, that's true too.
Well, individuals can't take their animals there.
They're changing that rule.
Are they?
Yep.
In twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, they reverted back.
Yeah, they had too many municipalities fighting about that.
Andy, can I ask for a agenda item for the next meeting about making a donation to whatever local place that we recommend? If we're going to have, just say five again next year, they should be compensated all the donation animal link that does park in the park or.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Thank you.
Isn't that, we don't want to single out?
Well, would it, would it be, make sense to have that discussion at the, this time next year and then maybe have a report from them if we're able to see where they came from and we can.
That's a good idea.
And if you know somebody has called and taken a pet there.
And supported.
Yeah, perfect. All in favor rejecting the SPCA agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I vote aye. It's okay, phase one, iteration updates, payment number seven to the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand five thirty-one to PSI Pumping Solutions Incorporated. I would entertain a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I vote aye. Budget proposal?
So, I make a motion to go with scenario three, to remove the local service tax, remove SPCA allocation, remove capital reserve allocation and expense. I make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to use scenario three, discussion?
Andrew provided a chart where that replacement gets moved one year. But for something like this, that was another huge topic of discussion this past week. And if something is going to be replaced like this, nobody ever came to council during this year and said, you know, here's three estimates to have it replaced. That two hundred thousand dollar replacement was just put in the budget. As well as other people have said, you know, and quite frankly, the men that I tell this to, it's a two thousand four hydraulics and rust on the bottom, they laugh. They laugh that, you know, they can't understand that like two thousand four, you know, I don't know, I don't have any more information on how many miles, maintenance, I don't have any of that information. But I believe that three estimates should come to us to see that it's feasible for repair instead of going right to putting two hundred thousand in the budget to replace a vehicle that, you know, would be more cost-effective to repair and get several more years out of it.
Well, if you read, if you read the literature on recycling, you know, recycling and replacing trucks of that size, pretty much the life expectancy is fifteen years. It's ten, ten to twenty, truck is, it's twenty-one year old truck.
We're not a metropolis, we're two square miles, you know? I'm not saying the truck does not get used, but I don't know that it gets used to the level of, you know, what you just referenced.
What would you have replace this system and take it annually as far as what, what needs to be removed or replaced?
I think there should just be a standing order, I just, you know? Like, instead of just always, because when this capital replacement was done, it was said that it doesn't mean it has to be replaced. When it comes up the schedule, it doesn't mean. But it seems to be every time it comes up, it's just put on the agenda to buy a brand-new one without seeing. You know, it's like the truck this last year, there was rust in the bed, that's what was told in a borough meeting, but there was. but there was no estimates to get that repaired. I don't know what the repair would have been because there's no estimates ever came. It just went right to buying...
That truck also had transmission problems and shifting problems?
I don't know what it had. Seventy to eighty thousand miles in rust of the bed. That was all that was given in the meeting, so I don't know that. And it just seems to be... It just goes right to buying a new vehicle or whatever it is without exploring other options. And maybe they're not feasible to repair. I don't know.
I'm running through all that or what we could do in the future to change.
Like come with a business case, come with, here's the repair. This is what it's gonna cost to repair it. It's gonna cost, you know, 85% of a brand-new one. Well, that, you know, or it costs a fourth of a brand-new one to repair it, whatever it is, but we should know that in order to make an educated decision on purchasing equipment.
And what would be involved with getting different parts?
So I think the motion is obviously to delay that allocation and expense by a year.
Well, this one says move.
Well, but it's just delaying that by a year. That's the scenario that's provided in the packet.
Remove it out of this budget, out of 20, getting it...
Oh, so out of just this budget, not entirely?
No, not entirely, no.
Because when you say remove, it's to me, it says remove.
Yeah, I thought the same thing. I thought it meant that it'd be totally gun away with.
No.
No, no. The scenario that's provided in the packet delays scenario three, removes the capital allocations from the funds into the Capital Reserve Fund for 2026, and it also removes the expenditure in the Capital Reserve Fund for 2026. So, yes, it's then what we did there is we just showed it pushed off to 27. Obviously, this time next year, we'll be having similar discussion, but I think at this point, what this does is it allows us to gather that information and over the next year present and just come up with a different approach to presenting that information going forward.
Well, it could be presented well before budget time, too. We don't have to wait till we get the vote.
Absolutely.
I just wanna clarify that the selecting the scenario is a subauthorization of actually sending the budget out for advertising. So as you... as the first item there, so I just wanna note that the motion includes authorizing advertising.
Yes, the public notice that is...
As well as just removing this expenditure from this year, I wanna take this next year to go over the financials, the discretionary spending that happens in this municipality. I wanna go over that and I would quite frankly like to see a tax decrease this next year. And I think with proper planning and budgeting that that could be achieved.
That could possibly work if a police budget didn't go up thirteen and a half percent.
And, you know, when vacancies become open, you know, 16 employees is over 1.5 million a year. That's a lot.
It is.
You know, so I think we need to pause and take a look at vacancies when they happen.
Andrew, what... that thirteen percent, what does that come out to?
What, fifteen?
You said thirteen percent.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. The dollar amount is $105,374 is our portion of the police budget that we would have to be paying. We have a motion and a second on the table. Do we need any further discussion on that? I think that... I'm not sure how to shoehorn this in. I spoke with Brian today and I... he believes that the Finance Committee is going to meet next week and that our budget is likely going to be a six to eight percent increase, which means we would have a benefit of about $52,687. Would be our portion of the police budget which would go down. Do we want... the question that you would have to ask yourself is, do you wanna do that now? Or do you want to leave it where it is at 13.34% increase? It doesn't make sense to have that much money earmarked whenever it's gonna be coming down in the next month. So I... but I don't know. I don't know how to say all that.
If it goes down, doesn't it just go back into the general fund?
Leave it and that could possibly be the repair for the dump truck.
So just leave it?
By doing option three, the budget balances.
Yes.
No question about that.
Sir?
Do you have a regular maintenance evaluation every year of your equipment?
Yeah, we have a PMS system. I'm sorry?
It's not a resident.
Oh. But anyway, the answer to the question is yes, we have a PMS system in place.
Thank you.
We're worried. Do I need to read the public notice to go with the motion?
I don't think that would hurt.
The public notice, notice is hereby given that the proposed 2026 budget for the Borough of New Freedom is available for inspection from today's date until December 8th. Borough Council will consider passage of the 2026 budget and a tax levy resolution imposing, and there's no tax increase, imposing a 2.3 mil general real estate tax, a 2.28 mil fire tax and a 0.2 mil EMS tax for the fiscal year of 2026 at the Borough Council meeting on Monday, December 8th, 2025 at 6:30 PM at the Borough Office located at 49 East High Street, New Freedom, PA 17349. Budget and copies of the proposed tax resolution are available for review and inspection at the Borough Office Monday through Friday from 7:30 through 4 o'clock PM. Andrew and Shaffer, Borough Manager?
So people understand that the mileage, real estate is staying at 2.3, fire tax is staying at 0.28, and the EMS is staying at 0.2 mil.
That's correct.
Not increasing, because we're not putting in a local service tax.
That's correct.
Per the motion.
That's correct. Is there any other discussion?
The public notice is 10 days before the meeting, just so if anybody's wondering why it says from today's date, it would be 10 business days.
Ten business days, right. Yeah, and that's just the law. You have to... that's the advertising requirement.
The only thing that makes it interesting is sometimes that hits Thanksgiving, so you have to plan around that as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay. Oh, this is just the tax thing that we already said, right?
Yeah.
All right, that brings us to administrative reports. Walt, did you have anything for solicitor?
I have a couple of things for you tonight. We received another return envelope from one of the people that we serve with the Altieri notice of taking. So we're trying to locate that individual, but again, their person, their address, judgment remains, it's updated. So we're trying to update and get them the notice. The... I still have the matter of One Franklin Street, East Franklin Street on my to-do list here. Is that something that I can remove? Is there anything happening with that that I should keep a file open for?
No, not currently.
Okay, so what I'll do is close it and then if something reactivates, why let me know and I'll take care of that. As I reported with the...
One East Franklin Street is the Vod's Building.
Yes. As I reported last month, Mark Kelly appealed the decision from Travis Sweetie's conviction and we're just processing that deal now. I will have some information that I'm gonna get from our Borough Manager, Andrew Schaffer, so I will be working with him to get that information and then we'll move forward to a trial in that case. The Devin Taylor lawsuit that he filed in federal court has had no activity since July 30th. There was a new judge appointed on that date and that judge has not yet taken any action in the case. So with respect to the incident at the last meeting involving Mr. Taylor, I have been subpoenaed to testify on Friday and we're making arrangements to do that by Zoom because of my medical condition. And on that point, I did review the actions of the council and concluded that the council complied with its obligations under the sunshine law or Open Meetings Act under the First Amendment and the right to provide an opportunity for public comment. So I did wrap that up. With respect to my medical situation, I just wanna tell you what happened was that I sustained a serious leg injury that immobilizes me basically unless I can get somewhere on a wheelchair or something like that. So I may need some accommodation for the next couple of meetings while I recover here because I'm really not ambulatory at this time. It's a result of an unfortunate vice collision on Saturday. So I just wanted to thank the council and Mr. Schaffer and the others at the borough for accommodating me in this situation. I really appreciate it because I do really enjoy and value the relationship I have with the borough as your solicitor.
Thank you. Appreciate what you do too as well. Manager's report?
Everybody has a copy of the October 2025 manager's report as well as the grant status report for the month. I don't have anything to highlight except one item that's later on in the agenda under correspondence, and that's a couple of meetings that we've had with Talky Communications. They are the company that will be installing the fiber throughout the borough utilizing the, I guess we'll call it the trunk line that was installed under the Heritage Trail Trail. So we're working with them as far as permit requirements and any kind of disruption to the residents. And there'll be more discussion about that going forward, but I just wanted to put that on everybody's radar. That we'll be reporting back regarding that and how that's going to proceed and impact anyone.
So that's all internet?
Yes. Yes, and it's all underground.
Okay, so how... how does that then work? Does Comcast, this year, you pick which one you want? They're gonna run their fiber next to Comcast existing cable?
They would run it in existing right-ofways, in existing street right-ofways.
So, yeah, next to their...
Basically, yeah.
Okay. The way that that was read, that this fiber was supposed to serve under... underserved or individuals not connected to the internet? How... I don't think anybody in the borough... I think everybody in the borough already has access, either through Comcast or Verizon's now offering wireless with the addition of their antennas up on the cell phone tower. So this is just another option?
This is just another option. It's to build out the system, basically. It's to expand into additional neighborhoods and give people the option to choose that connection.
What... does this cost outside of like any connection fees or permits or anything? What does this cost the borough if anything? Nothing negligible?
Administrative time.
Is this the same gentleman that approached us a year or so ago, the company that was speaking of doing this? Or has that gone by the wayside?
No, I believe that was the company that was installing, that was part of the project that installed the backbone, basically the trunk line down the Heritage Trail Trail. This is building out the system within the neighborhoods.
So they would need to get permission from...
The borough.
The borough and the electric poles, right?
This is all underground.
So I guess, I don't mean... tell me if I'm wrong, but this could be good for the residents because it might be competition for Comcast, which then could bring down...
Anytime you take away a monopoly, it's a good thing. Well, that's why we're optimistic, which would be much faster, am I correct?
Faster, more reliable, better options, more options.
Is there an estimated timeline, like two years?
They will pick developments that are basically are easier at first to try to get in so that they can get in, get set up, get a...
At first? I was gonna say.
I have a feeling yours probably will be one of the first ones. But again, the goal of this was just to put it in front of council. Obviously, there's a suggestion from the commissioners to help move that process along, possibly waive any fees, but I didn't wanna just, before we get to that point, blindside council that this is something that we've been working on in the background.
For years.
Sure.
And I mean, I'm glad that they're gonna try and help underserved individuals that don't have access. Like I hope that comes at a greatly reduced price to them.
Yeah.
Especially with potential issues with the library and getting access to computers. But I think that they should... I think it should be at least noted that this would at least potentially be competition for Comcast, so residents hopefully will see lower internet bills because more people are streaming instead of watching the cable.
Absolutely. This has been a big... this has been Kristen Phillips Hill, one of her babies, too, am I correct?
Yeah, the commissioners have really drove the process through and trying to reach those underserved communities. And while that might not be directly New Freedom, it is surrounding communities, you know, basically between here and the city, York City, on the Heritage Trail Trail, building out that network. That's part of Trail Towns and the Economic Alliance Initiative as well.
Do we need to do anything from a coordination with residents' perspective? Because there's been a lot of issues down in Maryland around other companies coming in and being a part of, you know, people's land. Sounds like we're gonna be drilling. Well, not we, but...
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm obviously in communication with other municipal managers in York County, so I'm hearing the good and the bad of other fiber companies coming into municipalities and installing this and what to look for and what... how to go through the process. So, you know, one of the major coordinations, obviously, it's the responsibility of that utility to notify residents, but it's also the responsibility of the municipality to assist in that and get the word out. But they will have to basically follow our regulations and we'll try to supplement that with any kind of notifications that we can get out to those individual neighborhoods. But, yeah, we are aware of that, not necessarily with this company, but with other companies, there have been some performance issues and that needs to be addressed.
What can we do? We make forward to ensure that those safeguards are there. Essentially, lessons learned from other municipalities, how can we utilize their issues?
That is more of a communication and making sure that they understand what the borough requires upfront because this will fall under a street cut permit. Even though they are not cutting the street, it falls within work within the right-ofway, which merits a street cut permit. And there needs to be some kind of financial security put into place that goes past...
Water lines and sewer lines and...
Right. You know, whether or not their, you know, council considers permit fees and waiving, and I know that's the request in here, but our standpoint is that at minimum, we need to have some financial security in place that's more than sufficient to see this process through.
You mean like a bomb?
Yes.
Maybe it's too early. Do they have to submit a map of where they're going to delay?
Yeah. Yeah, this is why I wanna start this conversation because I knew there'd be a lot of questions and... No, no. I anticipate that as we move through the process, there'll be some additional ones as well. Anything else?
What was the name of the company?
Talky Communications. Talky Communications. They, I believe they're doing a lot of work in Maryland and Delaware.
Any other questions for borough manager? Okay. I just have one quick thing. We've had a lot of talk during the budget about staffing and what's, what's required in Public Works and in the office, so I started looking at different, different boroughs. Littlestown, PA, which is right up the road, they're 1.8 square miles, we're 2.1. They have 4,900 people, we have about 4,900 people. They have a borough manager, a secretary treasurer, assistant secretary, clerk zoning, and a public works manager, and a sewer water manager. So their office is basically designed like ours is. Mannheim is similar. City of Butler is a little less, they do have five public works people, but they don't do any water, they do, they also do leaves. I guess what I'm getting at is I, I agree with Erica, I think we need a committee, I think we need somebody to sit down, and of course Erica should be on that committee. But we, we also need to look at what kind of services we want as a borough. Right now, we have Cadillac Services. The mayor and I sat during an EMS presentation, and one of the things they said was, well, what kind of EMS do you want? Do you want just EMTs? Do you want paramedics? You're gonna pay more for this, you pay less for this. This person can get your heart started, this person can keep it in one, you know, what do you really want? It's the same kind of thing with Public Works and with our office. Right now, we have a Cadillac Services, and yes, you know, it, it costs money. Public Works does our water system. When we hit COVID, I think I was in office a day and a half, and we hit COVID, we spent $36,000 a year for a water tester to come in, and he came in for like an hour or so a week. That's all we had. And all he did was sign the paperwork, we still did all the sampling, but they, they signed the paperwork and sent the samples in. So that alone is valuable. Public Works does snow removal, and our EMS and fire and police can get out, you may have heard these words before. Public Works runs our water system, and it saves $193 a person, $193 a bill. So from, from that, and that's over York Water Company. If we shut off New Freedom Water and went with York, we'd pay $193 per bill per household, and that savings is $398,545, which is pretty much greater than the total Public Works budget. So just our water system pays for Public Works. They also do our infrastructure, our stormwater, they help with sewer pipe, leaf pickup, street sweeping, snow removal, building maintenance, help with carnival, smoke on the rails, water liquid health, pears, et cetera. And four or five people in Public Works seems to be the, the standard. You need to be two or three deep, three deep really for water testing, otherwise you run the risk of people starting to get sick or people are out on vacation that you're gonna, you're going to fail tests. So I just wanted to put that out there because there's been a lot of things said about our Public Works. I can't say anything bad about our Public Works, I think our Public Works does an excellent job. That's all I had, President's report. Mr. Mayor?
On the York Water, we're spending over a million dollars because we missed the lapse in having it off or changing the contract. When does that do up again? We have to put it- 2028?
Is, yeah, I, I, the, if I'm recalling correctly, and I have it all written down, the agreement was 98, it was for 20 years, which took us to 2018, and it auto-renewed for 10 years.
And it's been a couple of years since you had given that list in the back of the budget of all the contracts and when they renew and so forth.
Yep.
Can you get an updated one?
Yeah, that was provided in the directory.
Oh, the-
Not, not this, but at the beginning of the year, the directory of budget.
I was looking for it in here.
Yeah, we, we did that, so that it updates at the end of the year and that's provided. That was February, but I'll make sure and update the copies of that.
Okay, so it'll come out again this February?
Yes.
Great, okay. I'll keep going on that.
Well, Schemen did not meet, I've been in touch with, with them about the utilization of our emergency facility for them. They're looking forward to that for Southern York County. I thank council for looking at that, for all your questions, that we're all on the same page. It's mainly, I looked at it as a benefit to the, the residents of New Freedom because you never know, jeez, we had, what, not too long ago, a major electrical outage. Had that happened in the middle of the snowstorm and below zero weather, where would these people go? Now, well, now we know where people will go, they'll be taken care of at our community center. I think we owe it to our constituents to, to give them that. I will also say I agree with everything the president has said about our, our Public Works and the job that they do and the money that they do save us. I'm a member of the mayor's association, and I know the other mayors don't know what they do without their own Public Works schema. We are going to have, I don't think we got a final date on our emergency management, did we? Oh, yeah.
No, that, that dual poll went out, the last result, there were only seven or eight votes.
Well, there's only seven, seven of us.
No, no, that went out to all elected officials.
Oh, I thought that was just for us.
Two different dates where it had six votes each and then a couple of those that had two each.
Well, then I had to change one of mine, so we had six.
Dates would have been the number of people that voted for a specific date, so that's why I think the last I saw was-
I picked one date.
Right, right, so that's why I was looking at how many, what the most number of votes were for a specific date.
So that went out to Shrewsbury, Glenrod?
Well, that would have been up to, it was sent out from Stan to be distributed to all elected officials. So we sent it out to the council.
To our elected officials, and we, about six, and you sent that back to him? And we haven't heard anything, is that what you're saying?
No, 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 that, that's cumulative, that's cumulative between all municipalities, that's not just New Freedom's votes, that's-
I didn't realize that, I thought that was just-
Yeah, so we should-
I would have gotten to some meetings.
Can you write an article for the next newsletter that might talk about the community center as an emergency show?
Definitely will.
Happy to. Make sure you include that, maybe even make sure that it's been announced, there's an emergency, so you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and some procedure and everything that they're doing.
Well, and that would, that could go out, I understand how we have what, it's not a 911 all call, but you have something set up.
With Savvy Citizen, that is, I have signed up for an account, but I can't go through the training because of the shutdown, so as soon as that's available, I will take, I have to go through a certification course in order to use that software. So as soon as that's available tomorrow, maybe. That's the same with the public information officer's training, that's not available either at this point.
That makes sense. Okay, I really don't have anything else, as I said, to the gentleman here, I would like to have back my reports on a monthly basis. I don't know what's going on, I'm not getting them because I need, you know, what municipalities to have.
I have a question for EMS.
Yes.
Is there a way to find out how many calls there was to a particular business?
Yes.
In, in the borough?
Yes.
Okay, I'll talk to you later.
Okay. Yeah, and I have a list of every household, I mean, they're, yeah, but that, that's another thing that I want to talk to EMS about. If we have a citizen, unfortunately, that we get eight calls a month for a fall victim, is that something that maybe they need some additional help, and how do we go about doing that? Because perhaps that person shouldn't be in a home by themselves.
Sometimes they get calls for an assist though, there is someone else in the home helping, but they can't pick them up.
Oh, yeah, sometimes, yeah, right, that's, that's the bulk of them, but sometimes there are individuals that are there that really shouldn't be.
New York City aging, would you call that?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. But I want to have a meeting with EMS to see what their protocol is and SOP is under the circumstances. That's all I have.
Brian Switzer was made vice chair of the commission. We are transitioned pretty much fully over from Gail to Samantha for accounting services. Officer Wa and Officer Castillo are done with their probation, it actually happened a couple of months back, but they are done, they're amazing, great asset to our department. School bus violation in Shrewsbury where a car side mirror clipped a child, the car was located and was taken care of. Again, the Flock is an amazing tool that we have here in our community now, but the past year, the Flock was able to alert the officers, which resulted in a chase down, 83. The Flock is, it's like a tag reader, there's a few of them out around our area, and it will alert the officers to the, their phone that there is a vehicle in our area that's stolen, wanted for whatever reason in the system when they broke the law. So it's been a great asset, then another flock hit, it was a stolen vehicle, homicide suspect went into Shrewsbury Elementary, they were able to box him in there and was able to pick him, get him out of our community. Officer Castillo came to chief and asked how his father's church could help the community in our area through the police department. So there's an entity called Logos, and it is a way to donate through a safety coalition, it's called the Shepherds Fund. The officers can contact them if they come in to contact with somebody that doesn't have gas money, no food, shelter, and through the Shepherds Fund, the police can request a pre-authorized gift card from this 5013C, and then the gift card will be forwarded to the officer to then give to the person who's in need, so it's a great community assistance Detective Schaefer is going to be entering the drop program in January of '26, and he has given us 25 years with SRPD, so we're very grateful for that. Right here at the stop sign, officer was coming to the apartment, and this car came up to the stop sign, threw the car in reverse, hit the gas, they heard the collision all the way in the department, turned out to be a person who was arrested DUI, and this person is from out of state and had actually already been stopped a few times by other officers in the last couple of weeks, so hopefully they will get the help they need.
And they have no insurance?
No insurance, wonderful. Tasers, there was six more to be purchased, it was authorized for them to go ahead and make the purchase of those. Since we left PRMS, the officer's pension is making over 8% with the new company, so that is good news for them.
PRMS was capped at 5.4, 5.25?
Yeah, it was capped at 5.25, so-
This gives an opportunity to earn-
Officers.
They said that our PRMS for police commission was capped at 5.45, and I've never heard that. I've never heard that. I don't know what this is.
Yeah. All right.
Engineer report?
What's actually, what's number 11, March Goodfellow Park Notice of Termination?
That is for the NPDS permit from the work that was done at the last upgrade, that NPDS permit was never closed out, so we had to do the work along with warehouse to close out and provide a NOT or Notice of Termination.
Just missed.
Yeah.
Similar to the pull point?
Yeah. Water system operator report?
I have a question on this York Water. If we get rid of York Water completely, does that mean that we don't have emergency water if we need it?
I guess that would depend on how you look at that agreement. If you maintain a connection that you could utilize in an emergency situation, then no. If you completely cut it off, that there is no connection, then yeah, that would mean you wouldn't have that availability in an emergency.
Hopefully, to make a new contract where we could use it as needed in an emergency and save the connection there as long as that development doesn't tear it up. Isn't that where it comes in?
It does, but it's, it's well beyond the scope of the reach of that program at this point. Just to point out, progress of that project will slow till the winter.
Oh, yeah.
There were a couple of updates this month to the subdivision development activity report is identified in the last line item of each. report is identified in the last line item of each...
The St. John of Baptist, the stormwater responsibilities as far as the state or the church?
Yeah, it's for the overflow of the stormwater detention basin, that's along Constitution Avenue, that flows basically over a firm.
Yeah, the one that's always flooding, Constitution Avenue?
That's what we're trying to address, yeah.
Yeah, but...
And the responsibility is that if there's additional concentrated flow going into that basin, what has to happen downstream of that conveyance and collection system to make sure it's sufficiently sized? And that's where we're having these meetings with PennDOT and the developer to make sure that's the case.
I'm sorry. Yes, Dan?
We just can't turn that here.
Sorry, apologies, I was asking about the stormwater at St. John of Baptist Church as far as the meeting held with identifying stormwater responsibilities. We didn't have the meeting since our last council meeting. We do have our rec. meeting here tomorrow at 5:00, and, thank you. We do have our meeting here tomorrow. We have not had a rec. meeting since the last council meeting. We are here tomorrow at 5:00 p.m., and we have the Veterans Dinner this Friday.
Ryan, I think we're next, Lee.
Yeah. I am all.
Yeah.
It's 18:00.
You're right.
Is it 5:00 or 6:00?
6:00.
I mean, yeah, numbers are at 6:00, aren't they?
Something happened with my calendar, then. I need to go through and redo it.
Did you travel outside of time zone? That's what happens to me.
Couple of weeks ago, yeah.
Yeah.
Apologies, thank you.
Just to just announcing a new director for York County Land Commission. We already talked about this, the internet.
Again, this letter was provided from Commissioner, President Commissioner Julie Wheeler, just about the process. We don't yet have anything buttoned up as far as what a street cut permit would cost Talky, and we're working with them as far as getting additional financial security in place to cover their, to cover any damages from this. So, just, again, it's something to consider down the road as we work through the process.
Anything on committees? Any additional public comment?
I would just like to point out that the mixed townhouse has to be the, the townhouses and apartments that went in on Franklin Street. It's something that's already been done, according to the complaint. And I think for the Ryder Farm, I included the area of the trails, the housing development, because it's not on my zoning map, has already developed, so that...
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, that's been developed for some time.
Yeah, it has.
I just want to be clear, it talks of 144 new apartment units of townhomes, and then it talks about additionally, another 20 rental units are anticipated as part of a mixed-use rental residential development, and there is a potential for a 37-unit single-family subdivision. So, those are three separate ones.
Well, the 37, the 37-unit is on Pershing. That's already approved and in works.
Yeah, because it talks about, it was after, so it is, yeah, because it says those 20 are rental mixed use.
I don't know where they would possibly be.
I couldn't figure it out either.
Well, it could be someone converting their house to rental.
But that would be...
That couldn't be the apartments out by, after the need of, could it?
No.
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 There's more than...
Those 20 units have to be the ones above Vortex and...
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's true.
But those are included in, not all included in that 144. So, that, that's just a little bit of...
No, those units are not included in that 144, right?
Well, they supplemented for some of the townhouses that were supposed to go where the stormwater improvements had to go.
Again, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. I'll second.
All the favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you again, everybody.
Thanks, Will, appreciate it. Hey, feel better or...
How are you? Good to see you.